Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Samamish City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, April 1st, yup, April Fool's Day 2025. If we could have the clerk please call the role.
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember O'Sheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmembers Gupta and for the land acknowledgement, Deputy Mayor.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. I'd like an emotion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
First.
Motion carries. And now it's time for public comment. So if the clerk could just bring me those.
Hi, everyone. I'm Keon O'Farrell. I have lived in Samamish all my life. I went to school here in Samamish. First, it was Challenger Elementary, then it was Pine Lake Middle School, next it was Skyline High School, and last it was the ACT program in Issaquah. With the help from my job coach Kara, I found a great job with CBRE and Microsoft, and I have been there for three years. I take the bus to and from work from Monday to Thursday. I love my job. In my free time, I volunteer at the WAI, go to the library, type on the computer, build Lego, and listen to music. I have autism. It is a part of who I am. I have difficulty with finding the right words to use in some sentences and trying not to get so easily upset, but I am working on doing better with both of those things. Thank you for making tomorrow World Autism Awareness Day in Samamish.
Thank you very much. You may have a future in public speaking. Is there anyone in the room who did not sign up who would like to give public comment? Ah, James Eastman.
James Eastman, Eastlake-Samamish Parkway. Like to welcome all the scouts here. I too was once one of you, a former Eagle Scout, citizenship in the community, if I'm not mistaken. But I was really, I guess, had a proud parent moment. Ever since my son was a child, he has wanted to go to one of the military academies. And so this week, he received an offer from the United States Air Force Academy. And one of the first things he did was he texted his scout leaders, and he said, "Thank you. If you hadn't have got me to Eagle Scout, I wouldn't have been able to get in." So, parents, don't let your kids quit scouts. They don't have anything better to do on whatever night they're going to scouts. And scout leaders, like, you make way more an impact on people's kids than even us parents do. Like, you guys are amazing. And I hope city council and city staff, like, they're here to learn about how legislation is run. And I heard Sid talking to them earlier today, or maybe it was Kent saying, "Hey, there's some regulars that come here for eight, nine, 10 years that you're gonna see every week, and, you know, they have something that they're gonna talk about." And I'm one of those regular scouts. I'm here all the time. I own a significant amount of land in this city, and I have ideas of how it could benefit the city to make it great. And I think maybe city council maybe gets tired of hearing from me, city staff, but, you know, I own the land, and I want to do something with it and make it great. But I think after a while, maybe you guys are maybe sick of hearing from me, and maybe you don't take me seriously, which maybe that is an issue. But I do have some ideas, and I would love to sit down and meet with you guys and talk to you about them. Because, you know, I don't enjoy coming here every three weeks out of a month for the last eight or nine years. I mean, I do a little bit, but not as much as you think I do. In regards to the parkway flooding, I mean, well, it should be a stormwater issue of what's going on down there. You have all the water that comes off the hillside. It hits a dam. The parkway's a dam. To get under the parkway, you gotta have pipes that are connected to a bunch of ditches that fill with leaves. They fill with branches. They fill with all kinds of junk. You can't get a backhoe in many of them where the parkway's sinking. You can't get a backhoe down there to clean anything out. We learned from the Solihue presentation what happens when you can't do that. In front of my house or my property, we had two massive trees fall across the parkway, took out power poles. They fell because the water's backing up into that area where it comes out underneath the parkway. It bubbles up into a pool of water about three feet above where the pipe enters out. That's how bad it backs up down there. It's that way for
Thanks, I need to cut you off there.
Eight miles. So it's a stormwater issue. We gotta do better down there. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else in the room, it will go to online.
Those who had pre-registered today, if you would wish to provide comment, please raise your hand. I see no public commenters. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move now to get approval for the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now going to presentations and proclamations. So the first proclamation is Autism Awareness Month for April, and we have Councilmember O'Farrell.
Proclamation Autism Awareness Month, April 2025. Whereas autism is a lifelong developmental condition that affects individuals in unique ways, shaping how they experience the world, communicate, and interact with others. And whereas the theme of the United Nations World Autism Awareness Day in 2025 is advancing neurodiversity and the UN Sustainable Developmental Goals, highlights the intersection between neurodiversity and global sustainability efforts, showcasing how inclusive policies and practices can drive positive change for autistic individuals worldwide and contribute to the achievement of the SDGs. And whereas fostering an inclusive society requires promoting acceptance, breaking down misconceptions, and ensuring that autistic individuals are valued, supported, and given equal opportunities to thrive. And whereas World Autism Awareness Day, observed on April 2nd, serves as a global reminder of the importance of awareness, advocacy, and acceptance, inspiring communities to embrace and support individuals on the autism spectrum. And whereas the United Nations first designated World Autism Awareness Day in April 2007, and whereas through education, advocacy, and community engagement, we can work together to create a world where autistic individuals are empowered, celebrated, and fully included in all aspects of society. And whereas the city of Samamish encourages all residents to participate in Autism Awareness Month by learning, advocating, supporting efforts that foster inclusivity, acceptance, and appreciation of neurodiversity. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Karen Howe, on behalf of the city, on behalf of Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Samamish, and urge all to participate in raising awareness about autism, promoting acceptance and understanding, and supporting individuals that improve the lives of those with autism and their families.
Thank you. And for the second proclamation, Deputy Mayor Lamb will talk about Sexual Assault Awareness Month again for April.
I think you gave it to me, but...
You look so much alike.
I know.
I got temporarily confused.
This happens a lot. Yeah, okay.
I never remember I give you that.
It's okay. Okay. Proclamation Sexual Assault Awareness Month, or SAAM, April 2025. Whereas sexual violence is a widespread issue that affects individuals of all ages, genders, races, and backgrounds with lasting physical, emotional, and psychological effects on survivors, their families, and communities. And the theme for SAAM 2025 is Together We Act, United We Change, highlights the power of collective action in addressing and preventing sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. And raising public awareness and enhancing education about sexual violence are critical steps towards prevention, empowering individuals and communities to challenge harmful norms, support survivors, and create safer environments for all. And amplifying the voices of those affected is essential in assuring that prevention efforts, survivor support services, and advocacy initiatives are inclusive, accessible, and equitable for all individuals affected by sexual violence. And fostering collaboration among community organizations, schools, workplaces, and local leaders strengthens the commitment to ending sexual violence through policies, programs, and initiatives that promote safety, respect, and accountability. And April 1, 2025 marks the SAAM Day of Action, encouraging individuals to wear teal in solidarity with survivors and to reaffirm our collective dedication to creating a culture free from sexual violence. And all members of our community are encouraged to take part in this month by learning, advocating, supporting, and supporting efforts that drive meaningful change, because only by working together can we build a future where safety, dignity, and respect are upheld for all. Now therefore, Karen Howe, Mayor of City of Samamish, joins advocates and communities throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and proclaiming April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Together, we commit to a safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Next, we will move to a presentation and direction, which is the King County Medic One EMS levy. So we have Michelle. Is that right? Great. And Chief Lane from Eastside Fire and Rescue.
I'm here from Morrison.
It's great. It's probably getting promoted right now.
There we go. How's that? Is that a good distance? A little closer, okay. Is that okay? Oh, wonderful. I sometimes project. Good evening. My name is Michelle Plord. I'm the Emergency Medical Services Division Director. That's housed in Public Health, Yellin, King County. So I'm here to present the findings and highlights from the process that we've been through. And Mayor, I know that you represented Samamish on that EMS Advisory Task Force, and thank you for that work. I've got some slides that I've prepared for you all, and hopefully they'll oversee the process, give you a little idea of what that was, and then I'll go through highlights from the recommendations. Also, I've sprinkled in little details from the fire department that serves Samamish, which Chief Lane oversees Eastside Fire. I've sprinkled some of those in there, and hopefully we'll have enough time to entertain any questions that you might have. All right. So as I mentioned, we have Emergency Medical Services Medic One Levy that expires at the end of this year. Because of that, that prompted regional elected officials to come together and decide, gosh, what do we need to have in terms of programmatic recommendations, but also the finances to support those recommendations. And so we spent about eight months coming together, overseen by the EMS Advisory Task Force, to deliberate what those are. What I really liked about this process is that we were able to have representation from across the entire county. We had an ability for people to raise any issues that they had in their local area, deliberate on those, and then come to consensus on the plan moving forward. So I really appreciated that. It is a requirement in King County to get 75% of all the cities with populations over 50,000 to move forward in supporting, putting the levy rate on the ballot. Samamish is one of those cities, and so that's why I'm here tonight. We do need only 75%, which the math turns out to be nine out of 11. We are seeking all of them. We want support regionally. And so I've been marching around the county, and you're my fifth city, so I really appreciate that. We also have to present to the King County Council, and they have to formally put that also on the ballot. So, let's see. What is Medic One? Some of you may not have heard of it, but not really sure exactly what you do. But every time any person in King County who calls 911 for a medical emergency, you're accessing that system. We're very well-known, not only just in our area, but across the nation and internationally. We regularly host people coming from all over the world saying, "Hey, how do you do it here?" And we're really proud of that fact. A few things to know about. We serve in the county over 2.3 million people. On the average, about every two minutes, in 2024, we went over 250,000 calls in that year. And in 2023, our survival rate for cardiac arrest was 51%. That may just be a number for you all, but for us, it's really meaningful. It's the gold standard for measuring the quality of an EMS system. And in general, this number is about two to three times higher in terms of survival rates than other places in the country. So again, that leans back to, like, what do we do and why are we so successful? So in terms of Eastside Fire and Rescue statistics, Eastside Fire serves Samamish, Issaquah, Mercer Island, the cities Woodinville, Duval, Bothell, and North Bend. And that's a big breath. Serving about 227,000 people, and I have a typo in there, my apologies, and 24 over 18,000 calls with an average response time of five, a little over five minutes. The 23 survival rate in this area of Eastside Fire was 44%. Just because there's variation, this is one year, and so it's a very small number, and there's gonna be a lot of variation within a year. But that's okay. Very, very high still. So what happens when you dial 911? Well, anyone in the county can dial, and they will then access a dispatch center in this region. It's NORCOM, and you will be connected with a telecommunicator. The thing that's very interesting is that they ask a very specific set of questions. They're all standardized across the county. And the reason that they're doing that is because we have what's called a tiered system. We ask a series of questions, and then BLS, our Basic Life Support, staffed by EMTs, go and respond to all of those calls. If there is a need for a higher level of care, for more acute kinds of situations such as a cardiac arrest or respiratory difficulty, then they will also send a second layer, which is called Advanced Life Support, staffed by paramedics. All of this is a very unique kind of mechanism in our area, and we believe that this is the best way that we can provide good quality care in our community. So I want to share a little bit of the secret sauce that people come over here to find out about. So why does our system work so well? Well, I believe, and many of the people in the community believe, it's for a variety of reasons. One, we have 27 different departments in King County, and we all come together. We all put aside our individual agendas and say, "Hey, what can we do in the county, and how can we better serve as a region?" We all believe that we're better together and that we have better outcomes when we do work together. We have a tiered system, and we are reserving those paramedics that are highly trained. They have over 2,500 hours of training, and we want to put them right where they need to be so they can serve the community best. We are also equity-driven. We believe that everybody in the county, no matter what their circumstances are or where they live, that they should have the same high quality of care. Also, we use innovative strategies. We partner with the University of Washington and conduct many studies to figure things out. We try new medications. We look at new ways of improving care out in the field. And then finally, my favorite is that we have a levy. It allows us to go through economic ups and downs. We've proven that during the downfall in AVs in the 2008 levy period. But we also have an ability to lower the actual levy rate during a levy period if we're collecting AVs or as AVs go up. So I like that balance, and we've been able to be successful with that. I wanted to cover a few things that we had in terms of consideration when we were deliberating about the services that we would need. One is, as all of you are probably aware, population has been growing significantly in the last couple decades, 18% in between 2010 and 2020. As you can see, it's really variable across the county. We have a lot of different things going on, and we want to be mindful of that variability when it comes to some of these circumstances or factors that we take into consideration. Population doesn't necessarily correlate specifically with call volumes, but it has an effect. And you can see, it's a little unusual because of the pandemic, and the data collection and responses changed a little bit. But you can see the gray bars are population increases through the last seven years that are shown here. The BLS layer, the EMTs, is the blue line. You can see that during COVID, it dropped significantly for that year. But unusually, it just sort of jetted right up there on the couple years afterwards. I'm really happy that it's starting to taper off a little bit. That's good news for us, taking the pressure off our fire department. The red line is our call volume for the paramedics. It didn't have quite as much of an impact, but it's probably the scale that's showing that lesser impact. But we did have a slight decrease with recovery after that. One of the things that we also track is response times. But the thing that's very notable about this is that during these five years, during that increase in call volumes, during the pandemic, all of those things that were challenging for all of us to manage, is that our response times remained very stable. You'll see the Advanced Life or ALS Paramedic on the left and the BLS on the right. This is a sign of stability, of resiliency and capacity within our system. So I wanted to make sure that you had a sense of how we measure and look at our performance in the region. One of the other things that I mentioned before around population growth was also showing there was an increase in diversity within our community. I have another map, but I wanted to keep this sort of a focus. But you can see on the left that the net population growth in that period of time where I was showing in the map, we had pretty significant increase in our Black Indigenous and People of Color community, particularly Asian, Hispanic, and multiracial communities. And we're keeping that in mind as we were deliberating on our programmatic recommendations. The other graph that I wanted to share with you is on the right in red. We also showed that there was an increase in residents born outside the US. And we were keeping track of that and making sure that our services were accessible to people who were born outside the United States but coming here. That leads to multilingualism. You can see that as a huge variability across the county. And that was of interest to us to make sure that, again, people across our county have access to our services. So we included some things looking into language access, into other kinds of things at a programmatic level. So what did we need to do as we were creating our strategic plan? So we needed to identify our programmatic needs. We needed to develop the financial plan that would support those programmatic needs. We needed to provide sufficient reserves. So that variability that I was talking about in terms of factors that affect our service, we would have sufficient funds in those cases. And then finally, we needed to recommend a levy length, a levy rate, and the ballot timing. So one thing before I wanted to get started on like where we are exactly, is that when we're talking about programmatic recommendations, that is for outside the city of Seattle. So since 1979, the city, which is when we started our levy in this region, the city of Seattle raises and receives all the levy funds that are raised in their city, and they manage that separately from the rest of the county. So when I'm talking about the programmatic recommendations, that's for outside of Seattle. But when we're talking about the total financial package, it's going to include the entire region. So before we get into the next levy period, I wanted to cover a couple things that were related to this levy period, which spans six years from 2020 to 2025. We started at a levy rate of 26.5, which was expected to cover a 1.1, a little over 1.1 billion over the six-year period. That's including Seattle and King County. In the King County side, we have about 664 million that was expected to be raised. We're still a little bit of 2025 left, so that's why I'm saying approximately. And those funds go to fund the paramedic layer in our system 100%. They have no other means of funding except for the EMS levy. We contribute to the BLS layer, those fire departments, because they have other access to other funds. And then 100% for regional services, strategic initiatives, and of course the reserves. The cost to a homeowner is about $159 at the beginning of that levy period, which is based on a $600,000 median home price. One thing I wanted to point out is I've done a couple of these, and people are wondering, "Well, what about the other AV? Are you only talking about raising AV, you know, for homeowners?" And I wanted to point out that this is just an example of the kind of cost. Of course, we're raising AV across all properties, including apartment buildings and any other, you know, buildings or properties. So I wanted to raise that. For the city of Samamish, at the point in time in 2020, the average home was at 873,000. So the average cost to a homeowner was about $231 per year. All right. So as I mentioned before, the EMS Advisory Task Force was the group that oversaw these recommendations. There were 20 elected officials. They represented cities over 50,000. Sound Cities Association, the fire commissioners had some seats. The King County Council also had a couple seats, and it was chaired by the Execs Office. For a technical aspect, there were four subcommittees off this task force chaired by a task force member, and they represented the ALS deliberations or recommendations, the BLS deliberations, regional services and finance. And you'll see the recommendations for each of those subcommittees. Let's see. All right. Again, the programmatic recommendations are for outside the city of Seattle. All right. For the ALS Subcommittee recommendations, they recommended continuing using the ALS allocation to fund the system with an inflator of CPIW plus 1%. They also recommended including a placeholder for in case we needed an additional unit if call volumes went up and if we felt like we needed some additional service. They were placed at 12-hour units in 2028 and 2030. They also recommended continuing to fund reserves and contingencies to cover any costs that might fall outside the allocation during the levy period. The BLS Subcommittee recommendations The BLS Subcommittee recommendations recommended an increase of the total funding by starting at 5 million in the first year of the levy, split between 3 million towards the basic allocation for the fire departments, but also 2 million for mobile integrated health. I'm not sure if you're aware of the Mobile Integrated Health Program, but it's designed to carve out response to low acuity calls or folks with chronic disease to see if we can lessen the impact on our BLS fire departments. They also recommended inflating at CPIW plus 1% to also distribute the new funds on a slightly adjusted methodology of 60% for call volume versus 40% to AV. And then they also chose to support the mental wellness and equity and inclusion efforts that were being supported by the King County Fire Chiefs Association. Third programmatic subcommittee was the Regional Services and Strategic Initiatives. These are programs that are region-wide, for example, the support of the medical program directors, the support of the system that collects data information so that we can assess our services, also includes training. They did recommend continuing those programs as they were designed, but there were a couple amendments that they supported. One is because of all the staffing increases, they wanted to expand our initial EMT training funding, and they also wanted to renew our telephone referral program. And again, this is one that helps mitigate the impacts on our BLS partners. The third recommendation had to do with focused in on the strategic initiatives, and these are usually larger programs that are funded to see if we could test things out. And for example, the Community-Based Partnerships Strategic Initiative, otherwise known as Echo, was supported, continuing that, continuing the data systems improvements, otherwise known as PRIME, to make sure that our data collection had integration with public health data with other hospitals. And then a new one came up, which is to provide technical improvements to our emergency medical dispatch. And so that was the package that they recommended moving forward. So this gives you a peek at what the finance looked like when you pull all those programs together. As you can see from the pie chart, that the preponderance of the funding still is supporting the advanced life support programs, followed by the basic life support, the fire departments, and then regional services and strategic initiatives. The table there shows what the numbers look like. When you add them all together over a six-year period, it comes to $919 million. The portion in here is showing what Eastside Fire and Rescue would get, both for the totals for 2025 at 4.8 million, of which 752 was allocated to the MIH program. And then each of the cities, major cities, are documented there. Wasn't going to go through all of them, but you should have a copy of this in your pocket. And then what's estimated in the 2026 first year of the levy, which is a total of 5.7, of which 1 million is going to be dedicated to MIH, and then how that's split out between the three different areas. The last subcommittee, which pulled all of these programmatic recommendations together, they are responsible for making sure that our policies around financing were sound. And so one of the things that they recommended right off the bat is to do a risk analysis to see what our reserves would look like and give us some data about how to estimate was appropriate for our reserves. And second, they wanted to recommend that based on that information that we have sufficient reserves and contingencies to cover those risks. I wanted to share really quickly a little bit what those drivers are around revenues and the expenditure side. So on the revenue side, of course, what we start at, what AV levels we start out in the first year of the levy, what new construction levels that happen and projections over the levy period, what's that split between Seattle and King County based on those AVs? And then finally, one of the considerations is how much of the reserves are we able to carry over from one levy period to the next? And you'll see in the financial plan why that plays a role. It's an important one. And then on the expenditure reserve side, how many units do we have? What's the cost per unit? What are the cost escalators, inflators projected to be at? Do we have any new services or new plans that we've added to the plan? And then finally, what are your reserves and contingency recommendations? So the risk analysis that we mentioned was conducted by the King County, and they identified four major ones. One is the AV. Would that have a variability that, compared to our projections? What was the variability for new construction? What was the variability for AV, for the Seattle AV ratio with the county? And then lastly, inflation. Each one of those had a range for the lowest level of risk to the highest level of risk. But for me, the most important piece was what was the risk altogether? We don't anticipate that any one of, or all four of these would happen at the same time, which in the calculations would be that it would be about $76.9 million impacting our financial plan. But we did want to, I want to focus on that range there and keep that in mind, between the 31.8 million and the 76. So when we pull all of those things together, I'm going to go in a little bit of a strange order, but it tells a better story. Number one, carryforward for this levy period is expected to be at 64.4 million. That's really great news. Those are those reserves that we didn't have to use this levy period or were expected to. King County Fund also has a little bit of interest at 17.5 million. And at 25 cent levy rate, we're able to raise a $1.47 billion in AV for a total of revenue of 1.552 billion. Our expenditures, based on those estimates that all of those recommendations pulled together, was $1.4 billion with reserves required for programmatic and rainy day at 67.7 for a total of $1.5 billion. So that delta between those two dollar amounts is a reserve for 47 million. And why that's important is we get back to that risk analysis range, and we felt, the task force felt comfortable with being right in the middle of that range of 47 million. One of the things that is sort of breaking a little bit now is we're starting to see a little bit of variability in those economic indices. So I anticipate that those available funds might change a little bit, but we don't get our final August projections until August. So we're anticipating, keeping watch on that. But whatever that variability is, we expect that these reserves are going to be able to cover that risk. So I'm almost done. This is the slide that shares what the proportion goes to Seattle and the proportion for the King County side. And then the final recommendation for the Subcommittee, the Finance Subcommittee, is to support moving forward with the financial plan that I just covered, projected a 1.5 billion over the six years with a 25 cent levy rate. And then the EMS Advisory Task Force supported all of the programmatic recommendations that I just covered, a levy rate of 25 cents. And just to give you an estimate of what the homeowner, a homeowner, might pay on an average of an $850,000 home is $212. The length that they recommended is six years for a 2026 through 2031 levy period. And then the ballot timing, they recommended a general election of November in '25. All right. That is the end, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Counsel, do you have questions? Councilmember O'Farrell.
I just had one. At the beginning of your presentation, you talked about the success rate of 51% on cardiac cases. What would you attribute that success rate to?
All of the things I kind of talked about were really, one of the major things I would say is our innovations. We are constantly looking at mechanisms for changing how we do things. For example, it's getting a little technical, but we used to have stack shocks. And so we did a study on whether that was efficacious and found out that it wasn't. And so we changed that protocol. And we have a really wonderful graph that shows every time we have a protocol change, what happens to our rates. And so when I started working at the county 25 years ago, we were in the 30s. And so when we made some of those changes, sometimes it's a medication, one of the things that stands out a lot is that we started what's called telephone CPR, so that when someone calls in, they've demonstrated that there's somebody unconscious, they walk somebody through, with their permission, of course, how to do CPR. The other thing I think that we're really unique in this area is we have a phenomenally high rate of CPR training in our population. The last time we studied this was about seven or eight years ago, and it was almost 80%. And so I remember, I grew up in Seattle. We had CPR training when I was in high school. And then the state came along and said, hey, we want everyone to graduate with knowing how to do CPR. And so it's not any one thing. It's a series of things. High-performance CPR, it's another thing where everybody knows exactly what they're doing. Everyone has a role. It's very clear. They train on it all the time. And so as I mentioned, it's all of these little things. Having a great connection with the University of Washington, which conducts these really rigorous studies. Do you have anything to add?
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. It's great to know we have such a great resource out there. And it's also really educational to discover why and all the work that goes in behind it and all the programs and the constant innovation that you guys are doing in collaboration with the community. So thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
So thank you for the presentation. I actually had to use 911 like about a year or so ago. I had to call for my mother, and I wasn't in town. And so I had to call for her, and she was in Sammamish. I was completely freaked out. And the person who answered the phone was so calm, and I couldn't even remember where she lived. Like, I just couldn't remember anything. And so I'm glad they have like, that they can track where I was calling from and just everything. So I very much appreciate what EMS does for King County and Seattle. I just had two general questions. Knowing that our EMS program is very successful and it is very dependent on our paramedics and the EMTs, is it struggling in terms of hiring similarly to like police and fire? And if so, like what plans or do you have in place to get more recruits?
I'm not sure if it's the word struggling. We're turning over significantly across. And so some of the things that I mentioned there is adding more funds, where we used to have just a couple trainings per year. We're having so many more trainings. I think probably someone who would have a better idea of recruitment would be Chief Lane because he's on the front lines of that. But I also know that we're, you know, it's changing. It's not as exciting as some of the other jobs that are in front of people, young people these days. But we just went through recruitment for paramedics, and we found nine fantastic qualified people. And so we're excited to be through some of this. The last couple of years have been rough, particularly during the COVID. It was, we were seeing the same kinds of people stepping away. It's a hard job. It is not easy. And that's part of why we had some, we have recruitment strategies to look a little bit more broadly in our community, and also starting a mental wellness strategies and so that we can support the people who are in the job while they're doing the job and see if we can sort of stem the tide on some of the negative impacts of doing this work.
Do you have anything to add?
Do you want to touch on the Future Women in Fire and EMS workshops?
Yeah, go ahead. You want me to? Okay. He's giving me all the spotlight. A couple of our recruitment strategies are, one is for the, since 2018, we have what's called the Future Women in EMS and Fire. It's a workshop that we host all around the county. Eastside Fire did it a couple of years ago. And it's specifically targeting women in the fire service at both layers, for EMT and paramedic work. We've been successful. It's been really cool to watch. I was there the first one back in '18, and now I'm starting to see people not only get through the program, get hired, but come back and teach. And the last time that we had it, it was coming up in about a month, I think there were about 15 people that were hired and now coming back to teach. So that's really heartening. The other thing that we've been doing is a recruitment workshop twice a year also, looking at diversity and looking at other communities that might not be thinking that this is for me. And so lots of work on that. That's a little bit newer. We've been doing that for about four years. And that's coming up May 10th.
Well, fantastic. I like the focus on trying to hire more women and just being more inclusive.
Yeah.
I did have just a general question. This is probably for Chief Lane. So is, I see for EFER, you do get additional funding from the levy. Between that and say what we pay in our contract, is that like most of what your revenue comes from for EFER?
Yeah, that's a great question. So as you know, Eastside Fire and Rescue, we're a governmental nonprofit. We don't have a taxing authority. And so all of our funds, so one of our primary funding mechanisms is through King County EMS. And then we do generate some revenue in our fee-for-transport program. And then the rest of the funds come from the five main partners using that funding formula we have. Then we also have the contract agencies that they fund the organization as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Gupta.
Thank you for the presentation. I know you mentioned the Mobile Integrated Healthcare System, and I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about how that's going, the challenges, what that looks like going forward? Because I know that's, capacity continues to be an issue, and that's one way to divert those capacity challenges for the BLS.
Yeah, so this concept started probably about 10, 12 years ago. We did a pilot in just a couple jurisdictions to feel, to kind of figure out the logistics of it. Originally, we thought, oh, we'll just add it on as a direct response. But over the years, we realized, gosh, I think it'd be better to have a referral system. So we still go out, still do an assessment, but many of the kinds of situations take a little bit more time. We need to have a better understanding of what the patient's needs are. But the key thing is to connect people who might be higher utilizers of the program to services within the community. I know that when we were looking at it, a lot of people don't know necessarily what to do in a medical emergency, and so they call 911. It's an easy number to remember. It's easy access. No one, people show up, right? At any time of day, any day of the week. And so we're trying to figure out ways to get them more connected in so that the next time something happens, whether they have a chronic disease, they can know what to do. The thing that I really like about the MIH program is that we don't have a cookie-cutter approach. And so we give folks the different departments, funds, and this is what happened in this levy period, is that we had a few in the last couple levy periods that were piloting it. This was the one where we were testing to see if we could do it across the entire county. So we offered every fire department funds to manage their own program. Some of them would partner up with a neighboring one and just pay their funds over to it and have that sort of larger footprint for a program. There was only a couple that said, hey, you know, this money isn't, you know, we don't have enough of a problem. And those are typically very small fire departments where the need wasn't that great. And the money that they got wasn't sufficient to kind of really host a program or even contract with one. It's going well because during this process, not only did they want to support it again, but they wanted to add to it. So that was a sign to me that there was a unified feeling about the MIH program, its success, its meeting local needs. And as I mentioned, every jurisdiction gets to decide what kind of program they want and how they want to manage it. Some in the area like Redmond, I know, looks at chronic disease, and so they focus in on that. Others look at mental health issues, others, and so I could go on, but that's sort of the gist of it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much.
Wonderful, yeah.
I'll ask one quick question, just having to do with...
I'll ask one quick question, just having to do with, do people, do your clientele or your service area, do they understand the value this represents? I mean, it would appear so, in that they overwhelmingly support this. Are you anticipating any headwinds, or if there were any, what would be the line that an opponent would use against a levy like this?
Good question. The last time we did this, six years ago, there was no opponent. There was no, what's this?
Opposed against?
It's like there's the four, and they opposed it. The opposition, right. There wasn't any group that came forward. Years ago, this is, I've been through a few, you know, let's fund this through the general fund. Well, I'm really glad we didn't do that. That was a popular choice back in the day. I'm glad we didn't. As you mentioned, you know, the voters are supportive. All the cities I've been through, the elected officials are very supportive. But when we go to the ballot, last time we were 80%. And so when we educate well, then we get supported. The way I see it, and I just mentioned it today, when I was at a meeting, every day that we go out, every time we go on a call, we're doing that service. And so people, over time, you know, you had your experience, we're doing that every day, every two minutes in fact. And so we feel like we have an excellent service, people know it, and they support it. The only thing that I can only think of, and it happened, the only failure I've ever seen, was in 1997, and we had six other items on there, and there was an anti-tax sentiment, and we were one of six and got buried. But we learned our lesson, be very clear about what you want. I think there's a couple advantages that we have. We have a lower levy rate, collecting more, but a lower levy rate from 26.5 down to 25, that's helpful. And we're only asking for what we need. 80% of the increase from this levy period to the next is inflation. So the rest of what we're adding are the things I described in the recommendations.
Thank you. So at this point, I think we are to provide some kind of direction on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We're just looking for direction from council to bring back the resolution supporting the measure. We need to, we plan to bring it back the first meeting in May, because we need to wait for King County to take action officially before we can take action. So this was the opportunity to hear the presentation and ask questions, and then give us direction to bring it back. We are proposing to put it on consent on the May meeting, but that's up to you all if you'd like to have a, you know, I don't think we need to invite our friends back. But we're happy to speak to it if that's helpful. Otherwise, we would recommend putting it on consent on the first meeting in May.
Would anybody like to make a motion about that? Do we need a motion to do that?
You can. This isn't the official, yeah, this isn't the official vote. So if you want to give me a head nod, it adds up.
Are we all good with this for May? Okay, very good. All right.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now go to unfinished business. So this will be discussion, the Town Center Plan and Code Amendment Project, SEIS Progress Check-In Review of Conceptual Changes and Delivery Schedule. I don't think you should take that personally at all. I did not, I didn't see that before.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. With me, I have Matt Branmire from the Department of Community Development. This evening, we are here to provide an update on the status of the Town Center Plan and Code Amendment work, and to go over some of the details on, if you want to skip to the next slide, on what some of the background is and why we're doing this work, what is not proposed to change, what is proposed to change at a high level, and where we are in the process. Then there'll be some opportunity for discussion and direction, although I will pause as we go through some of these slides and provide opportunity for any questions or feedback as we progress through the presentation on next slide. Okay, here we are. A lot has changed since the plan was first adopted in 2008, especially since the EIS work was done in 2006 and 2007 at the state level, the regional level, county level, and especially here locally in Sammamish. We have a whole new comp plan in place, we have a new community vision in place, there has been some fits and starts of development in the town center, and we've seen quite a bit of development out into the single-family neighborhoods and infill development. The code, the Town Center Plan and Code could use some simplification, could use some filling in the gaps, so to speak, of some areas where there are deficiencies. And we're hopeful that we can also continue with the work we did in the policy direction that we've been given to really try to find ways to promote diverse and affordable housing in the city. Next slide. Town Center is an investment in the community. It helps ensure everyone has a place to live, young people, older residents, residents with varied incomes. Town Center provides different housing products, owner-occupied townhomes, condos and studio condos, rental units in the form of apartments, studios and cottages. Following community conversations and adopted policy direction, we're trying to create a place where people can live, work, shop, gather and play. Town Center can serve as a new job center to increase employment in the city and can help broaden the city's tax base. Town Center enhances the community. It provides gathering places for groups and community events, we've heard a lot about that over the years. It also provides small business opportunities and additional commercial space for those businesses that need to outgrow their homes and move to more of an appropriate location. When you have a successful home business and trying to find a place to move to can be quite challenging. Development in the form of centers can protect the natural environment and provide opportunities for people to connect with its intrinsic values. Development in centers has a smaller footprint compared to subdivisions. Stormwater management practices can improve existing conditions. Critical areas protections enhance buffers through restoration. And finding the right trees to retain and the right trees to plant can lead to a healthy canopy in the right place and form. Town Center can provide retail and restaurant opportunities, which are the making of a vibrant neighborhood. Town Center development provides investment and infrastructure in amenities such as new paths and trails. Town Center helps Sammamish create walkable neighborhoods. And finally, a vibrant town center serves as the city's front porch and connects the city. Next slide. So we wanted to talk a little bit about what is not proposed to change. I think this is really important for everyone to understand that the scope of this project is really quite limited. We're not proposing to change the comprehensive plan adopted levels of service. The critical areas regulations that apply across the city apply the same way in the town center as they apply in the balance of the city. These were recently adopted, as you know, just this last fall. Stormwater regulations and standards apply in the town center as they apply across the entire city. There's no difference in how they apply in the town center. Clearing and grading regulations apply in the town center in the same way they apply across the city. Building regulations apply, and what are not proposed to be changed. Traffic concurrency requirements apply in the same way in the town center as they do the balance of the city. School concurrency requirements apply in the same way. Next slide. Water and sewer concurrency requirements as well. Next slide.
There's a bit of a lag.
Yeah, it's the system. The town center boundary is not proposed to change. The wedding cake transition approach that is the core of the Town Center Plan is also not proposed to change. And the plan elements are not proposed to change, although we are looking at ways to enhance and update those. I also want to outline that the existing and planned development that is vested or grandfathered, if you will, where there are buildings built or permits in the pipeline, are not proposed to be affected by this, these changes. This is not a revisionist effort. Instead, this is a forward-looking effort for projects that will come in the door in the future, and hopefully we can find a way to produce the type of housing that we feel the community has been asking for. Next slide. Before we shift gears into providing a high-level overview of what is proposed to change, we wanted to take a minute and provide some bearings around sort of what exactly are we dealing with here? What are we talking about? So the FEIS identifies the town center boundary as including 240 acres. Within that area, there are 26 acres that are civic area. That includes the Sammamish Commons, the Lower Sammamish Commons Park, the library, the YMCA, the city hall. Of the 240 acres, 83 are critical areas approximately. And that includes areas that are wetlands and streams and slopes and buffers, and results in areas that are preserved in, for open space and for critical areas functions such as habitat. There are about, currently about 10 acres of right-of-way or other public purpose areas in the town center that also serve as, in some form of open space, that are not buildable with buildings. So far, we have built about 11 acres of the town center with development, including the SAM apartment, the TRF, the Met Market site, if you will, the Sky Apartments, the Ichijo, Sammamish townhomes. Those all have been built. Planned and under construction is about 21 acres, and that includes the Brownstones West and Brownstones East, it includes the Aegis, that includes blocks five, six and seven, as well as block nine, that are all in some form of construction, construction permit or entitlement. And that leaves with this effort, what we're really talking about is 89 acres. So when you start to think about, out of 240, what's really left is 89 acres. If we start to look at numbers, housing units, the FEIS considered 2,000 housing units. So far, we have seen 326 units built, 730 units are planned or under construction, and out of that 2,000 units, number 944 remain. With commercial, the FEIS identified 600,000 square feet, 134,000 have been built, about 100,000 are planned or under construction, and that leaves about 360,000 square feet that would be left to be built in the TCA or the TCB, depending on how it works in the code, under today's code. So I want to go back to the housing units, because this really is the crux of the conversation. And if you were to take the remaining 944 and just say add 2,000 to get to the 4,000 unit that you've heard, that would result across 89 acres in about R10 would be the density. So thinking about that density spread across the 89 acres of buildable land remaining in the town center, that would be the 944 units that remain under the 2,000-unit FEIS cap. And if you were to add 2,000 units to that, you'd have about 2,944 units, and I think I did the math on that earlier, and that comes out to about R10, which in most cities is considered to be a lower density, multifamily density. Typically, in a town center, you would see something around the range of R40, which is what would result in the five-over-one or mid-rise type construction that most town centers include. Next slide, and I believe handing it off to Matt.
Yeah, thank you, David. So that brings us to what is proposed to change. And this might be one of the bigger changes overall in the plan and how we approach the town center. You see on the left is the existing town center zoning map. That includes five different districts, A through E, and then A itself is split up into five different nodes. And there's a lot of conversation in the town center plan about these different nodes and creating kind of these mixed-use areas that, you know, kind of the center of activity in each of the quadrants, essentially. To the right is a draft land use concept and town center zoning map. And you can see that we reduced it to essentially three different districts. That would be the urban core, mixed urban, and then the garden mixed. And we think this is a better arrangement for that wedding cake type of development that we're talking about, that kind of arrangement. And then also, we have the opportunity to provide kind of transition areas from the town center to the residential neighborhoods. You can see in the town center, in the urban core itself, this is where your taller mixed-use buildings would be. You want to note that, you know, some of these are already built or they're planned to be built, and we would have just the remainder left over for that urban core area. And then you transition down to mixed urban, which would be, you know, apartments, condos, you know, some mixed-use buildings, and, you know, no more than five or six stories. And then the garden mix, which would be kind of your transition getting into townhomes, smaller apartment buildings, no more than three to four stories. And this is all very, you know, synonymous with what the existing town center code allows, but it's kind of a different arrangement of these different districts. At the end of this presentation, we're going to ask you to comment on this in particular. We're looking for input and further direction on these maps.
Should I pause for one second? I wanted to make a correction to my math statement. So 944 units, which is what remains out of the 2,000, divided across 89 acres is R10. That's what I meant. So I apologize for any confusion there, I just misspoke, so I wanted to clarify that.
Okay. So in addition to the map, as we're working on the plan, we're getting very close to a draft. We hope to have a good draft for review in about six weeks. But of course, you know, the introductory sections that, you know, talk about the town center and, you know, the summary of trends and current conditions is going to be updated. A lot has changed, you know, as David mentioned, since 2008. We're going to refresh the plan's vision. Overall, the vision is going to remain the same, it's going to speak to the urban components and the natural components of the town center, but we are going to refresh the language. We're going to update the goals and policies. We're finding that a lot of the goals and policies from the original plan are, you know, still useful and still in play, but there are some that we're going to need to change or add to. There'll be new maps, pictures, graphics. Overall, the plan itself will be refreshed and have a much different look. One of the overlooked items, I think, in the original town center plan are the street types. And we want to be sure that we have, that we include different street profiles for different areas and different uses. This would include, you know, your typical street profile with on-street parking, bike lanes, you know, then pedestrian space. And that can change, you know, from one area to the next. In your, you know, town center, in the urban core itself, we would be looking for a grid kind of street pattern like you would see in any downtown. And then beyond that, you can kind of loosen up those requirements and, you know, build roads as development happens, essentially. We're looking at an updated capital facilities and project list. Our current plan has, you know, does identify several projects. It doesn't really take into consideration their buildability, you know, as a result of, you know, stream crossings or critical areas. We also have figures that are from 2008, which need to be updated, the price tag, essentially the cost of those facilities. And then it doesn't really speak to who's responsible for building those. And we want to sort that out, we want to understand the phasing of development and the phasing of these capital facilities. For the most part, I'm talking about the streets and kind of, you know, that profile, but we're also looking at other types of infill. but we're also looking at other types of infrastructure, including water sewer and, you know, stormwater drainage. We're also updating the implementation and monitoring section. And then lastly, you know, and this gets more into the code, we want to simplify the regulations and provide clear direction to the developer. The best way to do that, I think, is through a form-based code, which is more graphic in nature. A picture tells a thousand words, and so this form-based code will be filled with pictures, essentially providing clear direction to developers on what the city and the plan requires. We're also going to review, you know, our mandates for affordable and diverse housing types. We're looking at different incentive programs that could allow for bonuses based on the performance of the project. Bonuses that, or, you know, incentives that might include green building requirements, open space, landscaping. It could, you know, speak to the parking, all of these different options as far as providing bonuses based upon some additional step that the developer took in their proposal. And then we're also going to look at the multifamily tax exemption to see how that can be used in this area, and then we're going to refine our existing TDR programs. And then lastly, we're reviewing our tree retention and landscaping requirements for the town center as well. So, this is kind of all of the steps that we have taken on the left to date, and then on the right is, are the steps that we need to move forward with. These, kind of the top five are, you know, things that have been going on for the past couple of years. We really started drafting the SEIS and drafting the plan update in late January, and we've continued to, you know, through today. As I mentioned, I, we're hoping for a good draft of the SEIS and of the plan within six weeks, probably mid-May. It may be late May, depending on schedules and that sort of thing. We've also been meeting with the different agencies. We met with Sand Platt Water and Sewer. We met with the Fire District. We met with the School District, and we need to, we'll have follow-up meetings with them. We're meeting with all the city commissions. Next week, I, we're meeting with the Youth Board and the, is it Human Services? Yeah, the Human Services Commission.
And Sustainability.
And Sustainability. There'll be a joint planning commission and parks meeting, I think, early next month. So, we're trying to get as much information as possible and, you know, continue this discussion. Once we have a draft plan, we'll publish it, the plan and the SEIS, looking for a public comment. And then, once all that is received, we'll move forward with our, kind of our review phase of the plan and SEIS. And the draft code as well. I can't forget about the code. That's an important part. So, kind of circling back to late February, just over a month ago, we talked about kind of the scoping step that we took, and, which wasn't a required step, but we've sent out a notice to a lot of people. We included many different email lists and mailing lists and that sort of thing, and we received about 200 comments. And there were a lot of concerns, and we kind of grouped those into four different areas, and we're continuing kind of that conversation and how that enters into kind of the draft plan overall. And that leads us to a couple of questions, kind of remembering that scoping step, and we would like to just close out that scoping altogether and be sure that we are on the right track. And so, you know, this is your opportunity to let us know if anything, you know, or the direction needs to change. One of the things in particular is, you know, should we consider not increasing the maximum building size to 150 feet? There are several reasons why we might consider leaving that off at this point, but I'd like to have a conversation. Then also, what feedback does the council have on the draft land use concept, that map that I showed you earlier? If you have feedback on that, that would be great. Yeah, and that's the end of our presentation. I'm going to leave this map up on the board while you discuss. Is that it? Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and I'm looking for questions from council. So, Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you for the presentation, and I really liked the new draft zoning map, bringing it down to three, and if you include civic, down to four districts. And I think that makes it more simplified. Certainly, from a layman's point of view, it's easier to read, easier to understand, as opposed to all the town center A, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It's kind of difficult to kind of envision what's something, what would happen in those areas. So, I like, kind of, this is a bit more simplified. The question about the 150, sorry, was 150 feet-high buildings. I have to say that when I think about how tall those buildings are, I'm not a fan of it myself. When I think about how tall that would be in that very concentrated area, so I would like to hear a bit more about that, but it's, when I just think about the look of the city and the aesthetic of the city, I'm not sure buildings that tall really fit in that area, so I'm not a huge fan of it. So, that's, so I suppose, no, I'm not really, don't really like that idea, buildings that high. Currently, I think is our, what is our current height limit in town center at the moment? Is it what we've got right now, five stories?
It's 75 feet.
And is that, is that approximately five stories?
Six.
Six.
Maybe so.
And do we have anything that tall right now in town center?
I think the Sky Apartments are pushing that.
Okay.
Pretty close, depending on which side you're measuring from.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, okay. And I think in some areas, they've maybe kind of gotten around that by keeping roofs flat, so that, you know, they kind of can go up to maybe some taller heights, but they kind of keep their roofline flat, and maybe it's a bit more aesthetically pleasing when you see that.
And rooftop decks are a common thing these days. It's a trend, so having that amenity would be nice. The views from the top of a five- or six-story rooftop deck would be quite fabulous.
Absolutely, yeah. And it would be lovely if maybe one rooftop deck could have some public access, because I do also think about everybody's right to our views here, so I think about that often times. And then the other thing, comment I wanted was on like our internal road system. In our current town center plan, there is kind of an artist impression of kind of circular road system that should have been going through, and I don't think that that's the way we're going at the moment. But with kind of looking at our internal road system, how, is that going to be part of that kind of realigning or re, that looking that we're going to do at our TMP? Because we just adopted a new TMP, and I don't think we've addressed that internal road system yet as a city. So, is that kind of part of that work?
Yes, I do believe that is the case. And, you know, as, the roads would change a little bit, but there would still be a northwest connector that, you know, coming from Fourth Street, essentially going up to First Street. Previously, I think it connected to Main Street, but there's, you know, it's just not possible to get there. And then on the east side, we're kind of looking for a connection, you know, certainly upgrading Calvary Road or Lane, and then looking for a north-south connection from First Street down to, I believe it's Eighth Street. Yeah.
Okay. Crusader Way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did want to add one thing. So, footnote 17 in 2107050, the maximum height is 70 feet with a maximum of six stories above the adjacent streets west of 228th, and 60 feet with a maximum of five stories east of 228th. So, there's a differential that's currently in play, and we'd have to look at how that would work with the core urban, mixed urban, and garden mixed. One of the things adding on to what Matt said about the streets, that when he was talking, it struck me that we've been having a lot of conversations around who is responsible to build what? And that has been one of the big challenges with town center development. You'll note that all the projects that have been successful so far in building really haven't had to, not all of them, I mean, SAM apartments had to do some road improvements, but generally, most of those were situated in a location where they didn't have to deploy a really big, long road. So, it's been a challenge to figure out how to develop the northwest quadrant, for example. How do the roads get built up there? So, we're trying to identify who, you know, which roads the city would take the lead in building through funds, you know, created through impact fees, which there is quite a fund that is ultimately created through payment of impact fees. And then, how would private development then piggyback or continue to deploy the smaller connector roads around the primary roads that the city was to build? And ultimately, what that then results in is, is the city having more control over guiding how the blocks are laid out and how the streets are delivered and what the streets look like? We've identified that there is some realignment needed from what the plan shows on the east side, on the southeast quadrant, because currently, the road is shown basically in an area where it's infeasible to build it, because of the slopes and the stream buffers and wetland buffers and all the environmental constraints, and we'd prefer to follow our critical areas rules and not, you know, create exceptions for roads and wetland and stream buffers and slopes. So, there are some things that need to change. We have some ideas that we will be bringing forward around roads, and I think that is one of the primary topics with this update is, how do you serve the development that you anticipate taking place in a way that is logical and doesn't result in us having a lot of roads to maintain in the future, but that provides the access that the community needs?
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, greetings from London, and thank you for this. I think one thing that would be really helpful with this map is maybe to have something in an appendix to be able to explain to people kind of what the translation is, so that people understand that we're not increasing. As a matter of fact, I think in a lot of cases, especially to the east of 228th, we're probably decreasing some of the zoning, if you will. So, I think that would be really helpful, because it is confusing to have the, I can't even count that many at this hour, how many different zones we currently have today, and to be able to simplify it to four. So, I love that, but I think it would be great to be able to have something that translates that. On the roads, I've asked about this before, and I think it's really critical that we continue to explore a, an access point to the north, out of the northwest corner, to figure out how we can connect up to Inglewood Hill Road and be able to have a more direct access point towards the Marymore Light Rail stop that doesn't require us going out on the 228th and going around. So, I hope that we're continuing to explore what that would look like from an efficiency perspective. And then in terms of the height, is there any value in exploring a height above 70 but less than 150?
There could be, you know, increasing it to just 100 feet or that sort of, it may be viable. You know, it's, you just don't see a lot of eight-story buildings anymore. They, it's just not, or eight, between eight and 10 or 11. They're just too expensive. The finances don't work out. There are examples where incentives were offered, and then they were able to, you know, kind of approach it that way, but it's just not something that is done, but things could change. And so, if we just went up to 100 rather than 150, that might be, you know, beneficial as well.
Again, I'd be curious to see what might make sense. Again, limiting it to the core urban areas, obviously. It might be interesting to explore that, but I'm certainly amenable to taking the 150 off. I know that seemed to concern a lot of people, and so I think it's fine if we want to ratchet that down. I just do think as materials continue to evolve and the economics of some of those materials, we don't want to take everything off the table, because as we continue to try to promote the affordable housing, I think it's good to have a little flexibility in those spaces. So, thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Good job staying awake, Councilmember Stewart. Other questions? Here we go. Deputy Mayor Lamb.
Thank you. I'm just, I like the improved map. It's much more understandable. Would we continue to use like the different A zones to talk specifically about like more specific areas, or would we just say like core urban area to the north or to the west?
The, this map would essentially become the zoning map.
Okay.
So, the map and the plan, then, when the code is adopted, the zoning map would be updated as well.
Okay. When we were talking about the 150 feet, would those units be in the core urban only, or would that also be in mixed urban?
Yeah, that's all part of the conversation, and our discussion about the 150 feet was only discussing kind of this A1 area. I need to move this, which is here. That's the way we kind of discussed it. That's the way it was advertised in the scoping. And then keep in mind that this is, this is already vested, these projects are. So, it would potentially be north of Fourth Street. A couple of things that I didn't mention was, you know, we're kind of working through several density scenarios, and we think we can achieve the density, you know, without the increased height. So, that's one thing to consider. And then the other one is just, it's a very limited benefit, so, because it would only be applicable to this area here.
Okay, that's super helpful. And so, you're saying we could achieve R40 by keeping it at 75 feet, six stories?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
It might even be in the core urban, higher than R40, and it might be lower in the garden mixed than R40, for example. You might, you might see like in R60 or something in that range in the core urban, then it might step down to, say, R40 in the mixed urban, and then maybe it'd be somewhere around R20 in the garden mixed. And the idea there is that the intensity steps down around the neighborhoods. The one that we're looking at is, if you see those in the northwest quadrant, where there are those two big blocks of land, is how does the mixed urban abut those? And we want to make sure that we're providing the inadequate separation around the perimeter of the town center. We don't really have that issue so much along the east side. I guess there is some right over by Fourth, where that hooks down on the southeast quadrant corner. But we are also looking at, there are tools such as transition areas that you can apply that bring down building heights and intensities right along the first 100 feet around the edge, if you will, things like that that we could apply. We want to make sure that someone isn't going to see, you know, a 70-story building right across their backyard, that, you know, we had that similar conversation with the comp plan and the implementing development regs around how you step buildings back and sort of lower the level of intensity on the edge.
Okay, well, that's, that's super helpful. So, I'm comfortable with lowering the height, hearing that the densities would vary. My only other question is, I've been reading on social media, there's been information out there that, about the traffic, that if it were 4,000 units, it would be 44,000 daily trips. Can you respond to that?
Yeah, that.
You've probably seen it. Have you, you've seen it, right?
I have seen the petition. I have no idea where that number came from. That is not a number that our traffic engineers. In fact, if you go back to the original FEIS, I, I'd have to look at the exact number, but I think it was somewhere around 15,000 PM peak trips, which usually is higher than the AM trips. I have to look at the exact, I should pull that up. But, and my point is, is that we are in the process of doing our transportation analysis. We have our traffic engineers working on it. The Public Works Department is leading that effort, and they are supporting the supplemental environmental impact statement. One of the elements of the environment under CIPA is traffic and transportation, and that will be part of the documentation that will be published. I do not know where the number 44,000 came from. I've never heard that number thrown around or talked about by staff. If anybody has an idea about where that number came from, you know, please let me know. If anybody has an idea about where that number came from, you know, please let me know.
Okay, well, thank you. So it sounds like it's 15 PM, 15,000 peak.
I'll look, I'll look real quickly here and I'll tell you.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilmore questions? Councilmember Treen?
Yeah, thank you very much. So I guess the first question is, why the, on your draft land use concept DC zoning map, why the decrease in the civic area?
Is that, are you referring to the Nodge property?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, we need to update that map to include it. Yeah, we just received this this week and that was one of our comments.
So then that, so then it's, I think the other information that I'm receiving tonight in your presentation is you're talking about like who's going to pay for what. So here's what I know about developers, if it's not in writing, then you don't get it. So I, what I would like to see in the draft is that, yeah, okay, throw the pictures in, but pictures don't actually, well, tell me, can they hold up in court? Can a picture hold up in court?
Are you referring to the Form-based Code?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the Form-based Code would just connect the, the street type with the building type and then talk about the pedestrian area in front. So it wouldn't establish who is building that road or what type of road, well, it would establish what type, but not who's building it. Yeah.
Okay, so...
It's kind of...
Here's where we find ourselves in the city of Sammamish often, is we lose in court. So what I, if Form-based isn't going to help us win in court, then I'm not into it at all. What I'm trying to ask then, or state as clear as possible, is we need the town center language on the regulations to be, in a sense, locked tight so that we know this is what we're going to get. This is who's paying for it, this is where the road's going to go, this is how the building's going to be there. Now, the design and all that, that's the builder. And I, we have some design standards already in there. I would like to see them be a little more specific. That would be nice, too. So that's where we're, I was hoping when opening this up, that that's where we'd be heading for it, so we'd be heading for good design standards, good regulations that stand up in court so that developer builds what the residents are expecting.
That's exactly what we're trying to do on both of those. I mean, we, we do want to improve direction on design, but then also be able to plan the infrastructure and, and have it be locked tight. We want those questions answered, you know, as more properties are developed.
So how are you going to do that in the draft?
In the, well...
In, in this document?
So the draft plan itself will speak to those things and then the code will put that into regulations that will be enforced as development occurs.
All right.
I mean, it's, we, we have more work to do, certainly, but I mean, those are the premises of how we're approaching these chapters of the plan and, and the code.
And so, and I think I heard you say this, so for clarification, is this a, do we see this as a phased development?
Absolutely. I, we do think, you know, each of these properties will be phased over time, but we do need to look at some of the connector roads as far as building those first. They're going to have an impact on how traffic operates. In those cases, you know, we might look at impact fees, of course, and, you know, so far, I think for streets alone, the impact fees are around $6 million have been paid in, in impact fees. And so more will, you know, be paid for as development happens. But there's also, we could consider like a latecomers fee, which is essentially would be a tap on when a property develops that uses that connector road, they would have to pay a fee in order to be able to, you know, gain access to it. So that we would be paid back for anything that we're fronting up, you know, and building upfront.
Well, what if we did it in reverse and just had them build it?
There might be concerns with that. I think Washington law might, I'm not certain about that question.
Have them build the roads first and then...
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think it'd be done through a development agreement, so that's one way to do it. Another way to do it would be for the city to build it and then do some form of local improvement district where then, as development comes online, it's required to pay its proportional share of the cost of building out that road network. I'm not familiar with a scenario where unless it's done through a development agreement or through a master plan type situation where roads and infrastructure are put in and then infill happens over time and the developer puts upfront the money to build the roads and infrastructure, usually the, the road and infrastructure is built at the pace of development happening alongside development.
Yeah, because I mean, initially I think the understanding of the residents was that, I'm going to switch subject here as an example, but the regional storm facility was something that we thought we were going to get and that it'd be open water and it'd be something beautiful and an amenity to the community. Clearly, we're not going to get that, or could we?
We are looking into it, yes. That's another one of our aspirations, but we don't know how feasible it is to phase that or to acquire the property in order to implement that part.
Yeah, because I would think that'd be a benefit to the developer to have that, plus it's a benefit to the residents.
It could be an amenity.
So if you do gradual development or phased development, is, okay, the environment that's up there, especially as we head north, cross Fourth, it's a lot of habitat. How's this new plan going to work to meet the wildlife interface that King County's requiring us to do? And at the same time, protecting the environment?
I know less about that, but, you know, as David mentioned, the critical area requirements are in place and those will be enforced, as will the stormwater, you know, we're looking at tree, new tree preservation requirements. All of those requirements are essentially in place, all the environmental protections.
So when you say tree, see, because when I hear development and tree retention or tree ordinances, I see less trees. So...
Yeah, that's certainly true. They have a right to remove some trees on their property.
Yeah, so, so my point is, it's like if the plan is to keep 48% of the canopy of the city, how does this particular portion of the city maintain a percentage that's higher than, say, 10%?
So, so a lot of that has to do with the compact center development form, accounting for a lot of the potential infill in the neighborhoods. So what it does in theory, and you know, this, we're talking theory now, is that it relieves some of the pressure for housing to be built out in the neighborhoods. It protects neighborhoods from continued infill, so to speak, and it redirects that to a center that has a more compact footprint and that is designed for an urban setting. So there are, there's landscaping that's put in place, there are trees that are, that are maybe deciduous and maybe more appropriate for seasonality, where you have access to the, you know, solar access during the, the winter year, winter season, whereas with conifers, you don't have as much solar access, it can get quite dark there. So it's kind of that balance that occurs where you're, you're trying to promote growth in the city in one area in favor of trying to slow it in other areas. The opposite happened, so my understanding is that when this plan was put in place in 2008, the intent, part of the intent behind it was to provide a place to start to focus development so that development would, would slow in the neighborhoods. And the, the challenge is, is that the exact opposite happened in the city, is that development was complicated in the town center because the, our town center development regulations are very complex and you had to assemble land in order to make it make sense and it took a long time for assemblages to occur. Meanwhile, we still had the, the development regulations on the books that were from King County. Even King County had changed its development regulations and we hadn't quite made those changes. The council took that on in 2019 and really started digging in on, you know, how can we change development that's allowed in, in the R zones? And we started to see a shift in the city away from the R zones and back into the town center. So, you know, that, that took that long to get there, but the challenge that we had was that the intent behind the town center was this compact development where it's walkable, where you could start to get transit connections being brought in, and that's where most of the density in the city would go, but the exact opposite happened and it continued to build out in a sprawl format out into the neighborhoods. So we are where we are today, we're, we're seeing development slowing in the neighborhoods and we have an opportunity to continue to, to focus that development into the town center, but in order to really be successful, we need to rethink some of the parts of the plan and code. I would say with regard to habitat, that our habitat rules are directly related to critical areas protections, that we're not going to generally see a habitat corridor or path right across the town center. That might be drawn on a very large scale map that, that happens to show something in the vicinity of town center, but I think that that line is really trying to show that there is a logical connection. It's part of the basin in the ravine form that's there and a lot of the canopy that remains in the, in the basin, and that, that is where the, the habitat corridor is intending to go. That's how our habitat rules, in our critical areas rules work. And that would be implemented in the town center, just like it would be implemented in other part of the city.
And trails and connectivity, then, how does, how does that work into it?
Trails and connectivity in an urban setting really have, really, we're talking about pedestrian paths, pedestrian trails, recreational trails, social trails that would be built by design throughout the town center and connect out into the neighborhoods ideally, that you'd be able to access the town center from any, the northwest corner, the southeast corner, and that there'd be trail connections that would bring you into the urban, the core urban area where you could then enjoy the gathering spaces and the urban amenities that have been built there.
Last question then, because otherwise we'd be here all night, but 2,000. How do we, what about 1,000? So why 2,000? Why the number 2,000 increase in capacity?
Additional, that's what was studied in the original EIS, essentially.
And are, are we looking at anything else then? Or is this scope is just on 2,000?
If, well, it's 4,000 total, right? But an increase by 2,000, correct. If this council chose to direct us to limit it to 1,000 increase, we, we would limit that. The reason why, as Matt said, the 4,000 number was chosen was because it was what was studied in the, in the original DEIS back in 2006 and 2007. And what that allows under the CEPA rules, if you read WAC 19711, or if you take a look at the State Department of Ecology CEPA handbook, you'll note that the process to which, by which to update in, in EIS is to do an SEIS, a supplemental environmental impact statement, and you can consider the range of options that was studied under the original draft environmental impact statement as a starting place. And it allows you to, to consider the range of impacts that were evaluated there and update those and use that as a starting place instead of starting a new, with a, with a new environmental impact statement. If we were to choose 6,000 units, which we're not proposing, but just saying, then we would be required to go through the process of doing a new environmental impact statement, starting fresh. So there is a cost savings to the city. The studies that were done back in 2006 and 2007 in many cases remain completely relevant, completely intact. There are really no differences between what was studied then and, and today's conditions. However, there are many elements of the environment where there are major changes that have occurred, and we are in the process of evaluating those through gap analysis to identify where there are different conditions today and where the, the 4,000 units that was studied in 2006 and 2007 might result in a different impact because of the different conditions today, if that makes sense.
Well, yeah, because I'm, one of the things is if you just change the box, the transportation concurrency assumptions, then I could tell you that the conditions have changed.
I would say that transportation is one of the elements of the environment that is being pretty much completely rebooted with the study because we, we need to, you know, so much has changed, not just in Sammamish, but all around us, you know, the improvements that have been made on 202 down in Redmond near the Whole Foods, the, some of the lane improvements that have been made up by Providence Point, the roundabouts that have been put in, the whole network is different than it was in 2006 and 2007, and, and in most cases has resulted in an improvement in mobility, both in Sammamish and around Sammamish, and has facilitated Sammamish residents getting to those state highways and freeways that we don't have in Sammamish, but we need to access.
Well, we still haven't addressed the issues of the choke points, so it just seems to me it's like moot, but I'm one voice, but that's my input there as far as, you know, how are things changing? Well, climate, temperatures are hotter than ever. Cyclone bombs we haven't ever seen before, heat bubbles. So, I mean, just to name a few. So, yeah, it's changed, but I, I look at it and just say, if it's not going to be a phased slowdown approach, and there was some way that the council could put this into overdrive by funding road projects and moving into concurrency and throwing another 2,000 additional dwelling units into it, I think if, if, if it turns into something that this SEIS is going to make it a fast pace, open the barn doors, let the developers come in and do whatever they want as fast as they can, huge mistake. And that's based on studies by a number of organizations that are out there that are respected around the nation. So I think, I think we should be caution, it's a little cautionary tale, that if we're going to fund all these improvements to infrastructure and allow access to more dwelling units, you're, and you go fast pace, build it now, build it quick, get it locked in, that's, that's a dangerous, that's a dangerous concern of mine. Thank you.
Unfortunately, my, my little device here does not work, so I'd like to see a show of hands. I just wanted to confirm something, too, with Councilmember Treen. So it, did you have a preference over the zoning maps?
Yeah, I like it the way it is.
Okay, thank you. So if you guys could raise your hands, Councilmember Clark?
All right, thank you. So first, I guess, I couldn't really visualize what 150 feet was, but I was looking at Redmond's new development, because that's the only thing I, thing I compare it to. So just around their downtown light rail station that's opening, is it next month? What month is it? No, May. It says up to 12 stories, so 144 feet, so I'm good with reducing, whatever that means, but I could not even choose a number, because I still cannot picture what that would be, but I'm good with that. I like the new map, would love more colors, more crosswalks, but no, I think a good crosswalk between what it was, what it's going to be, some really easy to read and understand terms would be great. Oh, go ahead, did you have something? Okay. And then lastly, I'm so glad Deputy Mayor told me about this petition. I guess a question for maybe Matt David, and Councilmember Treen says, decision maker Kent Treen, Sammamish City Council, position four, and a quote that says, city staff estimates an average of 40,000 additional daily car trips. So I, again, I'm wondering if that came from you, Councilmember Treen, as the, the decision maker? I would love to know where that came from. And with your name on it, representing the council.
I have no idea what that is.
I will say that, and I emailed you all here while I was here, that the FEIS that was published with the hybrid preferred alternative... was published with the hybrid preferred alternative of 4,000 units and 600,000 commercial identifies on, let's see, it's PDF page 21 of 289 for anybody in the audience listening or at a later date watching this, does say for transportation trips, the preferred alternative is estimated to generate approximately 5,000 gross PM peak hour trips by 2030. Just, I wanted to make sure to correct my statement of 15 earlier. Again, I was wrong with the numbers, tonight's not my night. But I wanted to correct that for the record.
Yeah, so again, I would love to know where that came from. I guess if not from city staff, but it sounds like it's quite a discrepancy in number.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, thank you. This was really informative. I really appreciate having everything laid out like this. I would echo the feedback of, this is great of seeing how the maps changed. I think having more of a communication of what would that really, what would the effects be of translating from one to the other. But I do like the new zoning map. It's much simpler to understand. Yeah, I agree. I'm comfortable with not adjusting the building height, not going to the 150, keeping it where we are. My understanding was the, one of the goals of potentially studying that was reducing the amount of space on a plot that was built upon and then potentially increasing the open space on that plot. But if, as we saw, if it's only that little piece of that core area, the benefit is maybe not there compared to the amount of concern that we've heard from the community. So I'm comfortable not moving in that direction.
One of the other challenges is the program challenge of having buildings like that is you're moving into a high-rise form of construction. It's different than the mid-rise. We're well-equipped for the mid-rise, but there are program considerations and longer-term costs associated with having high-rise buildings in the city. And that's one of the factors that plays into that as well. So once you go over the mid-rise height, which 80, then you flip into the high-rise category where there's different training, different staffing, different tools and equipment needed to service those types of buildings.
Thank you very much. That's all ahead.
So from my perspective, I do prefer the second land use concept and look forward to seeing it updated to show me where the civic areas show up kind of across the board, because I'd like to see how that maps out. I do think that having something simpler and much more relatable is going to be extraordinarily helpful. I never thought anyone would ever even consider doing something that was 150 feet tall because the costs are astronomical. You're looking at at least two elevators, maybe four, definitely four emergency exits, never mind the parking. It was insane, it was crazy. But I cared about the number because I care about the affordable unit bonus pool that we can get. So all I care about really is if we can get there with a lower height, awesome. But I deeply care about the affordable bonus pool being extended and expanded. If there are no other questions, oh, but there is. Coming to you live from the UK, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, David, I heard you, I heard you correctly, I think you just said mid-rise tends to be 80 feet. And if I heard you correctly from our code, there was a six-story limit, is that correct? And I apologize, I didn't take a note, so I read it earlier.
No problem, yeah. It's, it's down in footnote, it's 2107050 in the city's municipal code, and I believe it was down in footnote 17. The maximum height as measured is 70 feet with a maximum of six stories above the adjacent streets. That's kind of hard to implement, but I'll leave it alone. West of 228th and 60 feet with a maximum of five stories above adjacent streets, east of 228th Avenue. Again, I would rewrite that differently, just knowing how hard it is to, if you're on a slope, not a steep slope, but a somewhat of a slope, and the streets are at different elevations, well then how do you measure the stories considering the adjacent streets? So I'll leave that there.
Yeah, well, and again, my, definitely totally okay taking the 150 feet off the table. But I would love for us to review, is 70 feet and six stories right? I hear a lot about five over two. And last time I checked, that adds up to seven, not six. And I think I just heard you mention in passing that mid-rise, or the mid-rise tends to be, you know, the standard is 80 feet. So I think, again, in the 17 years since the original code was written, if we have to make some tweaks to that, I'd be interested to know what those might be. Again, not going anywhere near 150 feet, but to get those optimal, you know, sizes that, again, would produce the best chance to get the affordable units and the appropriate density. Thanks.
I'll follow up with one thing on that, and that is that economics have also changed. And we're starting to see a trend now where parking garages are being built above ground. Whereas for a period of time, parking garages were being built underground. So now we're starting to see two or three stories of parking garages being wrapped with retail or with some form of artistic wrapping, if you will. And then above that, we're seeing residential units being built. So instead of digging down and spending all the money hauling material around, they're now just building on top of the ground and building parking garages above ground and wrapping them.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so again, there may be, you know, a tweak to that 70 feet that might make sense in those situations that we should just consider so that we're not locking ourselves into a number that was selected several decades ago. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I just had one more quick question. If council ultimately chose a capacity number between 2,000 and 4,000, are we covered under the supplemental EIS for 4,000?
Yes, and that would happen at the tail end of the SEIS, the DSEIS process, the draft supplemental environmental impact statement, which we will be issuing this ideally the middle to late part of May. And there, that would, that would open up a comment period. And I think one thing to think for the, for anybody listening out there, that is really the most important part of the whole process, to provide comment on the draft supplemental environmental impact statement and the draft, excuse me, plan that is issued at that point in time. And following that, then the council would have the opportunity to direct staff on a final alternative that you want to, you want to be, that you want studied. We would then address comments, amend the plan, and update the SEIS to be a final supplemental environmental impact statement that would include, say it was 3,000 units instead of 4,000 units. You'd be covered under the original draft supplemental environmental impact statement. And we would then create that final study that focuses specifically on the preferred alternative that you are wanting finalized.
Okay, great, thanks for the clarification.
Well, do you, what?
Can I speak?
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, sorry, just very quickly, I just wanted to make sure, I think you mentioned, but just to highlight again, the proposal is not to increase by rate development. It is, whatever number is chosen, it is specifically tied to affordability outcomes. So, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And that gets a bit challenging when we're moving density around. And the idea here is that we're not, this is not intended to be a big windfall for the property owners, right? It's intended to be a calculated return on these types of development that they're providing and that we want to make sure that with any additional market units that are allowed and the benefit to them, that they're also providing market, or excuse me, affordable units and market smaller sized units, so that we start to get that diversity in our housing stock that we keep hearing about.
And presumably, I know this is still, the details are still to be determined, but presumably this would be at a higher rate than is required otherwise. We had our mandatory requirement that we passed in December, just 10%. So presumably, these outcomes would be beyond that to some significant degree.
Yes, and then there's also other kinds of zoning incentives that we're considering, you know, to add bonuses for, that would, you know, achieve other goals of the, of the plan, including, you know, green building or, you know, saving open space or saving trees, or there's other things that could be considered for bonuses to get that return on the investment.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you, David, thank you, Matt, for being here. Do you feel like you have enough direction and clarity?
Yes, we really appreciate the conversation and look forward to continuing to bring back this work to you for your review and feedback. And we really look forward to, I think more than anything, working with all the boards and commissions and getting their feedback on it and continuing outreach to our agencies and our service providers. You know, making sure that we're, everyone's aware of what's going on and that they're aware of the next steps and how to engage. I think it's all really important.
Very good, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to, let's see, to new business, excuse me, to contract authorization of financial advisory services. So Vicky Carlson, Director of Finance, will help us with this.
Yep, just getting my presentation up here. So it looks like that was ready. So, good evening, for the record, Vicky Carlson, Finance Director. So I am here tonight to talk about the contract for financial advisory services. Financial advisors provide a wide range of services, including financial planning and management and assistance with debt issuance. We do not currently contract with a financial advisor, and it is a best practice to have a financial advisor, especially when it comes to various financing options for infrastructure projects. And it's advisable to have them onboard prior to undertaking these endeavors, as it does give them time to get to know the city and our needs, and they can provide the best possible recommendations. So from a financial planning perspective, they can provide a broad range of services, including multi-year financial planning, shared services analysis, operational and program analysis, including policy review and advice and research on a variety of voter-approved measures. For us, we would utilize these services as we move forward with planning of the Metropolitan Park District, including options for potential capital needs related to the MPD. From a debt management perspective, financial advisors help cities by providing expert guidance regarding debt issuance and management, as well as the various financial planning aspects related to capital financing. The Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, which is a national organization for government finance professionals, recommends that municipalities contract with an advisor prior to undertaking any kind of debt financing. There are no planned debt financings in the current biennium, but there has been interest expressed by at least one council member to explore debt to pay for various infrastructure projects. It does take time to get a financial advisor in place. By contracting now, we have a partner for when we are interested in exploring debt as a financing tool, and they can assure that we have everything in place for when we are ready to consider issuing debt. So a few things, if we want to consider issuing debt, they help us choose the most suitable financing method and structure for potential debt. They run scenarios on various factors, including timing, cost and terms. They help ensure that we receive the best possible financing terms, including interest rates, maturities and other areas to minimize borrowing costs. They have in-depth knowledge of and access to the municipal bond market, which enables them to identify favorable market conditions for debt issuance. They would act as a liaison between us and bond underwriters and negotiate favorable terms to ensure a smooth bond sale process. And they would provide ongoing support, including assistance in continuing disclosure requirements. We have unlimited infrastructure needs in the city, and they would help us determine the best path forward for financing these projects when appropriate. When it comes to financing options, these are all services that are typically provided by financial advisors. Cities don't issue bonds without utilizing these outside services. And then finally, we did go through an RFP process last year with interviews conducted at the last part of the year. Through that process, PFM was selected as the financial advisor. They hold contracts with over 60 governments in Washington State alone, and several of our surrounding cities partner with PFM currently. This is a pay-as-you-go contract, not to exceed $250,000 with a contract expiring December 31st of 2029. We do have $20,000 in the current biennium budget in the professional services line in the finance department, department. And the planned usage of the contract currently is assistance with the MPD planning. We're asking council to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with PFM.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sorry, happy to answer questions.
Very good. I look forward to questions. Council? Councilmember Trean?
Yeah, since I pulled this from the consent agenda, I'll just start, you know, it's the first time I've seen this, and so I was also unable to find any reference to the work plan, or it took me some time. And thank you, Mayor Howe, for the budget document, page 255 on the footnote about where this was even budgeted, so I'm glad we could find that. So my first question is, why PFM?
Through the interview process, they rose to the top. We interviewed two different clients. I worked with both clients, or both, both companies in the past. They have the resources available to not only help us after we have come up with a financial plan going forward, which oftentimes that's where private financial advisor step in, is at the end of the process. They can help us during the process to make sure that we have the right path going forward.
If I may follow up on that answer, I want to remind that we did do an RFP process and we received two applications and PFM was the one that was chosen.
Yeah, I understand that, thank you. I have a concern with PFM, mainly because it's a, the Seattle office, is that the office that would be getting help from?
Portland.
Oh, you're going to do Portland?
That's who bid on the services.
Is the, wow. So, and then the second one, was it a local Seattle guy, or where's the second one from?
Seattle-based.
Yeah, Seattle-based. So if PFM's national, good guys, but if you don't get one of their top two guys in their office who actually will work on the project and come up here and actually do the work, the quality, I'm concerned about the quality of work we would get from PFM, especially if we don't get their top dogs to work on this project. We would be, I believe we'd be better off servicing with the Seattle guy, who I would also imagine is less money.
Pricing was comparable between the two, and I have worked with the individuals that are selected for this particular contract. They provide top-notch service.
And where, and where did you work with them before?
They were a financial advisor with City of Tuculpa.
All right, I'll just leave that for, Vicky, I'd like to have a meeting with you about that for later. So what benefits will PFM provide that justify the 2,500 expense?
It is a pay-as-you-go contract. Most of the costs associated with the contract would only come into play if we issued debt. That's where they do most of their work. The lower price is just helping us through the financial planning for the Metropolitan Park District. And again, we only have $20,000 budgeted this biennium.
So how will their service directly impact the city's financial stability and our long-term planning?
Again, they, they can help us navigate and give us options to consider and give us the best path forward as we look at these different projects in front of us, particularly with the MPD. There's a lot of decisions that have to go into it. We have to do financial modeling for that. There is a possible capital, depending on what goes into the MPD, there's a capital component, and they can help us do the analysis to determine what is the best, best path to recommend for funding those capital projects.
Thank you. That's what I thought, good. So, okay, so to kind of keep, I have several questions, but I think you could answer them if I just met with you, because it's kind of after the 20,000. It's next year or the following year. My question's about their expertise on how they could actually deliver what we would want to be trying to do. want to be trying to do in the future. But has this, so I want to kind of change directions then about their efficiencies and expertise, but has the city explored an alternate, did we explore an alternate method or a different route to take besides using some financial advisor?
This is a typical process for cities to use financial advisors for this type of service.
Depending on what the outcomes would be?
Particularly surrounding debt issuances or different financing options.
So on the debt piece of that, on the budget, is it true that we could go into debt, or we could borrow, or go out for bonds for up to 481,645, plus some more?
I'd have to look to see what our assessed value is and do the calculation, I don't have that in front of me right now.
So I'm looking at page 32 of the budget on long-term debt capacity, and that's the number that was reported.
Then that would be accurate as of the assessed value when we did the budget document last year.
Thank you. And then if we went out to vote, if the council decided to do council-matic debt and a vote, it's possible that we could go up as high as 802, almost 803 million?
Again, I don't have that budget page in front of me, I'd have to take a look at it to answer the question.
Yeah, so I'm looking right at it, and it's 802,742,072. So again, this is back to, why would we be, are we actually looking at, as a city, to go into debt?
Again, we have no plans to issue debt at this point. There has been, one council member expressed the desire to look at debt, and again, having a financial advisor in place prior to having that conversation is a best practice.
Councilmember Trinh, if I may, just to follow up, I want to remind that right now we are not in a position to use debt because we don't have revenue enough above our expenses to be able to do the debt service payments without having to drastically reduce our current operating budget. That said, part of the analysis that we would look at in, as part of all the options that might be available, bringing a Metropolitan Park District proposal to the voters, could include adding potential debt into that for projects that would go with the MPD. So that, those calculations would need to be part of the analysis, and we would want to do the analysis well in advance so that you all could make informed decisions. And that's why we felt it prudent to bring on the financial services advisor now, as we start to build out some of these, as we look at some of the options, to be able to provide you all with plenty of runway to talk with the public and for you all to make final decisions in advance of actually putting something on the ballot. So this is, I feel it's prudent to start now. I think when we were discussing this at the retreat, one of the pieces that we continue to say is that we need all the time that we can to prepare for this, and this is one of the bigger pieces that we need to have in place. So that's why it is our recommendation that we move forward now with this contract.
Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions?
Not a question, just ready for a motion.
Well, please, I'll take a motion.
All right, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with PFM Financial Advisory Services LLC for financial advisory services for an amount not to exceed $250,000.
Second?
Second.
It's been first and seconded, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, thank you, Vicky. I think this is reasonable, I think this is very prudent, and I think we've talked about finances probably every meeting for the last couple of years, so looking forward to this, thank you.
Other comments on this? Approved budget item? If not, we'll go to the vote. All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 6-1.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to council reports and the city manager's report.
Mayor, if I may?
Oh, did I miss that, sorry. Just, I'm skipping right along here, so sorry, I apologize. Pavement Management Strategies Plan, Audrey and Greg. So sorry, you two.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are very excited this evening to present our 2025 pavement management strategic plan to you. We have a short presentation, the contract will be coming back to council for approval on April 15th, but this is just a sneak peek presentation ahead of that calendar item on the 15th. Joining me this evening is Greg Stomantio, our Deputy Director, and I also, before we get going, wanted to acknowledge our team that is working behind the scenes on this plan, our new city engineer, Lea Wu, who you'll meet in a few weeks, as well as our management analyst, Jen Rubinelli, and our capital project engineer, Joe Dapsovich. So really looking forward to sharing more about this plan, excitement. I've already spoke to most of the overview, but we'll provide just a few slides on what pavement management is in our existing program, and when I do say existing, I am kind of through 2021 through 2025, and then we'll take a few moments to discuss our very important work ahead of us over the next eight months or so of 2025 for our pavement management strategic plan, as well as what that plan means in the world of our upcoming contract as next steps. So before we get going, I just wanted to highlight, this is one of many things that we have in the works for transportation planning this year, so you're very familiar with the town center work that David and Matt were just speaking to. We are in the middle of our bike and pedestrian mobility strategic plan. Of course, tonight we're talking about our pavement management plan, and we'll be back to council in a few months with our Sahale Way Corridor Study. I mean, I think we're coming in next, in two weeks with our first version of our six-year transportation improvement plan, or our tip. And of course, all this work will be reflected in our TMP update this year. In addition, we're working on mini-code updates and standard updates and other strategic plans along the way. So just wanted to provide a little bit of context to this very specific work that we're about to talk about today. Next slide, please. And I'm actually going to hand this over to Greg, and he'll walk you through pavement management, our existing program. Go ahead, Greg.
You, Council, Greg Stomantio, Deputy Director of Public Works. This slide details pavement management at a high level, and it's where we are today, and later on in the presentation we'll be discussing where we're hoping to go with pavement management. Pavement management is the building and maintenance and renovation of one of our most valuable assets in the city, valued at approximately 250-plus million dollars, which incorporates back-of-sidewalk to back-of-sidewalk, so asphalt included in that, curbs including in that, lighting and others, but asphalt makes up a huge component of a major capital asset that we need to maintain appropriately. Reminder, we've discussed this life cycle of capital assets prior, but capital assets are billed using appropriate project management, where you plan, design, and construct, and a project is completed, but the project at that point is not done. It's turned over to our maintenance team, it's turned over to our engineering team, and we've come up with life cycle plans to short-term maintain the product, with long-term planning also of how we go about maintaining our roadways. Life cycle typically within a roadway is 15 to 20 years for our arterials, our major roads like 228th and Sahale, and anywhere from 20 to 30 years on local roads. This, of course, is dependent on traffic weight and traffic usage on the roadways, but those are generalities. The biggest components of the items we're going to be also discussing today is what is made up in these plans, how the plan is used to implement the program, and what is the goal of optimizing our investment of pavement. So looking at what pavement management has been in the city for the last five-ish years, our last analytical report was completed in 2021 by TransMap. That is actually going to be the company that we're going to be proposing to complete the next plan, but our prior report was very, very analytical. The report was conducted by having a van go out and with two technicians, one driving and one analyzing, doing very detailed mapping using radar of driving both sides of our streets within the city of Sammamish. They are evaluating the conditions of our roads, using an industry-approved scoring system, and that'll be discussed further on the next slide, but you could see our approximate mileage and what that report details, and it's, yeah. Pavement condition and pavement condition assessments are used to rate asphalt using a scoring mechanism called pavement condition index, or PCI, with a scoring range being from 0 to 100, with 100 being brand-new asphalt, and 0 being full failure. We'll see examples and pictures of this on the next slide. To the right is the end product of that, what that survey creates, there's a lot more math within the report as well, and statistics, but this is one of the key components, which is our PCI map, and as you could see, blue is very, very good, and our roads in Sammamish are generally in very, very good condition, with sporadic greens being fair and very few pores and reds. This map was from 2021, and our pavement management plan and our overlays have addressed a lot of the concerns, as you see on the map, as they're detailed in the past. So as I was mentioning, pavement condition index is the universal scoring, with 100 being brand-new asphalt. You could see 75 is coming down to satisfactory rating, where you could see some sealing and some spalling within the asphalt. Alligatoring and massive wear is when you're reaching up a 50 on your PCI scale, with 25 down to 0 being full failure and serious concerns. Here's our, some of our current rehabilitation methodologies we use at Sammamish. I apologize, all these pictures are from Sammamish, except for the pothole repair, which Audrey pointed out to me, I didn't find one of those in time, because we do not have square manual covers in Sammamish, so, but that still is a good picture of a good pothole repair, using a tampering methodology. So working from your left to right is our annual maintenance to preservation maintenance to rehabilitation or reconstruction. You could see we have pothole repairs and patching that our crews do, crack sealing, which our crews sometimes do, we also have a crack sealing program, which we bring in a contract every year and seal off areas that have moderate scoring, which are not down into the 50s or lower numbers yet, they're more likely into the 75s and the 60s. We have started implementing over the past five years a system using a product called Gap Mastik, which is, does very good repairs of our roadways, and our crews implement that themselves. We, every year, do a grind and overlay program, project, and we'll discuss where those have been in the past, but here's some pictures. That's milling down the concrete usually two to three inches with a planer, as seen at the, no, there's no planer, both of those are asphalt machines, playing the asphalt and then lay down new asphalt at about two inches, and then at the full lower scores, you have to go down and actually fully rehabilitate the subgrade because it's completely destroyed. This slide details the investments that the city has done with pavement management over the last five years, with a average score at somewhere in the 80s, approximately. In 2021, it was 86, which was an exceptional range, with a low down to 82, which is still very, very good. We've been spending in a range from anywhere from $7 million a year on maintaining our pavement to a low of $2 million in 2021. The projects that we have completed over the last few years for those grind and overlays that I discussed were 228th, which was completed a few years ago. It was key to note that the PCI or condition assessment of that roadway at that time was a 57, and we also received federal grants to help fund that project as well. In 2023, we did grind and overlay at Kohani and Hunter's Point. Last year, we did 216th, 17th, and 18th in Maine, and also some locations on Isqal Falls City Road, and this year we're planning on a mill and grind and overlay on Beaver Lake Drive. Prior to moving on to, this is mostly to date, the programs as is, and then the next components of the presentation, we'll be more discussing where we want program to go, but we wanted to take a moment to pause and see if there's any questions, because it kind of got pretty technical there for a while.
Council, do you have questions at this time?
If none, I will be returning the presentation back to Audrey, and we'll be discussing the 2025 pavement management strategic plan and where we're hoping to go.
Thank you, Greg. So you've just seen, we've seen Greg walk us through our existing report, which is a great report, which is very technical. What we would like to go with the program is to have more community engagement and involvement along the way. This is a major asset of the cities, and we need to involve the community. I'm very excited to also announce that this pavement management strategic plan will be the pilot program for our brand-new racial equity toolkit, so we are very excited to utilize that toolkit lens as we look at some decisions for this plan, and as we prepare the plan and present those decisions to you. We will be asking council later on this year, in July and September, to set some policies for pavement management in general, as well as some goals for the program. Typically, we'll ask, most cities do have policies for a minimum and target range for their pavement conditions, and of course, we'll look at some other things like criticalities and different scoring methodologies that we're very excited to present to you at the July study session. Of course, we'll look at our own operations and review those as well, and by the time the plan is wrapping up in August and September, we'll have a lot of different funding scenarios as we can look for how to find pavement, either through the 340 fund, 438 fund, depending on if the road conditions are requiring for reconstruction, and of course, the other funding mechanisms with the street funds, our overlay programs, our crack sealing, our preventative scenarios are funded through that program. Next slide, please. So we'll go through, a lot of this slide does focus again on what I just talked through in the last slide. I did want to take a minute to recognize that this plan will also be advancing many of our citywide goals and your city council goals as well, so very, very much looking forward to doing that. And of course, this plan advances our program, so our program implementation will begin in 2026 through 2031. This is a key, key plan to have for the next five to six years for the city. Next slide, please. There are four focus areas that we're focusing on for this particular plan, and you'll see this slide again in July in future presentations. There's, so the first areas are 2025 street conditions, so the methodology here will be the same. We will work with a consultant to look at our roads, but we really want to understand the conditions of our roads in individual segments for our staff. We want to take a look at on a granular level, those smaller sections of roads, and of course, we'll average some of those out and do some benchmarking with other cities and bring that data to council. The next core area that we're focusing on is our maintenance and repair strategies and optimal operations. So we do want to take a look at how we can optimize our own operations, if there's ever consideration to bring some additional pavement services in-house, which is how can we bundle different types of services for the long-term for different types of contract work as well. And of course, how can we implement and include new strategies and technologies as that evolves over time? Next, please. The third focus area, of course, is prioritizing all of our great data and including equity in our street selection process. We'll utilize a criticality lens, as well as our great work with our racial equity team, to look at how we can include the entire community in our street selection process, and of course, we'll be asking council to set some policies and goals for some of that criteria. And finally, our plan will focus on funding needs and strategy, it'll really set the foundation for the next five years, but this foundation will be critical, and it will likely impact decisions five, 10, 15 years out. So really, really looking forward to some creative options, hopefully, in ways that we can fund the program going forward. we can fund the program going forward. Next slide. I'm going to hand the final slides back over to Greg, who's going to discuss the details of the contract.
So, request for qualification was completed earlier this year. We received five proposals from consultant firms, providing proposals to assist us with this new 2025 pavement management program strategic plan. There will be no action tonight, as we were finalizing a few scope items with the consultant, but we expect to have that back to the city council on the April 15th. Council meeting on the consent agenda, based off of our current discussions with the consultant, we are expecting this contract to be on or under. The contract will include, as Audrey mentioned, not only the standard pavement condition assessment and the field data collection and analyzing of that, but they're going to also be working with us to evaluate our current treatment methods and look if there's other opportunities using industry-standard methodologies to maximize our pavement asset management and our budget availabilities, looking at funding needs and also a opportunity, as this company does GIS analysis and right-of-way surveys, there are some components within our current right-of-way, namely, streetlights, signs, sidewalks, that haven't been mapped appropriately in our GIS system, and we are taking the opportunity to include that within the scope of this contract, as it is a good opportunity to get good bang for our bucks, since they're already driving all of our roads, doing the survey for the asphalt. Staff will be leading the implementation of a racial equity toolkit, and there's also community engagement, which will be detailed on the next slide on our schedule. So we are here at April Fool's Day. We are going to be coming back to you, hopefully, with a contract for approval on the 15th, with project initiation in May. Our assessments and inventory survey will be completed prior to the end of June, with data integration and development of that plan in July. We are looking at holding public engagement in August of this year and coming back to the city council in the September study session. We'll hope to present the draft pavement management plan presentation in October with adoption prior to the end of the year. That is the end of our presentation.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I'm looking for council input here. Who has a question?
Deputy Mayor Lamb. So we currently don't have a strategic plan for pavement, which is why we have one here being presented to us. I guess I'm not, so what have we been doing so far that we feel like we're deficient on, that we need this plan?
It's a great question. We have a great technical report, I believe it's over 600 pages long, as we were reading through it, it's full of great data, but we would like to involve the community and some of the decision points along the way, hear from the community. We hear from the community all the time, and we also need this plan to set policies and goals, like I said, so we can have a target and a minimum PCI to plan for. Currently, the last four or five years, we utilize our recommendation, or we prepare recommendations based on need and make those recommendations to city managers, office, and finance department in preparation for the budget. And we'd like to plan further out than each budget cycle and have a five-year plan.
Okay, so it just sounds like up until, for now, we just take a look at it sort of like on a yearly basis to assess like what our PCI is, and then we determine where we need to go forward, and it's like just done yearly, and so you just want to plan further out?
Yes, so the assessment is, industry standard is two to four years for those pavement condition assessments. So the assessments are done in alignment with industry standard currently, so that will not change. We would just like to add some other components to the plan and have a broader, longer-term vision for pavement management, and of course, have some funding strategies other than our street fund and 340. So this will be the foundation for many years of decisions and work, but we need to, those decisions start with having some minimum and target goals and policies set by council.
Okay, how are getting grants looking like? I probably shouldn't even ask that.
I don't vote any payment grants right now.
What's that?
We're not aware of any payment grants that we can utilize for the program currently. I will say, if anyone knows of any, we would love to.
As I mentioned, though, we have been successful in the past at using funding on the 228th for our grind and overlay project. We meet regularly with our grants internal team, who coordinates regionally and evaluates all opportunities at all times.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel member Stewart.
Yeah, Audrey, I think you mentioned this, but is part of this to look at the, I know there's been many discussions over the years about when do we need to do what types of repairs, and when do we need to do the overlay, when do we need to replace on that PCI? So is that part of what this is, and maybe looking at whatever other maybe new methodologies or technologies are out there to see how we can, again, get more life out of our roads at the lowest cost? Is that part of what we're looking at, as opposed to we just have a PCI number, we say, when it hits this number, we got to go do this? Is that, is that really what you guys are looking at here?
Absolutely, that'll be definitely part of it, and a very important part of it. We'll present a lot of different industry-standard methodologies that other jurisdictions are currently using. An example of that is a chip seal. It does present a rougher surface, but it's about a third less in terms of costs. And so those are some things that we'll walk through, and this plan will definitely include. There's new technology all the time, there's different fiber elements that can be added to the hot mixed asphalt as it's added to the roadway that ensures the lifespan of the roadway are a little bit longer. So we'd like to take a look at some of those different things as well.
And you said, looking at like things like the equity lens, is this also going to look at, you know, as we look at materials and things, I know there's some amazing advancements in more sustainable materials, which may not cost less, but are really interesting to look at, where I think there are some countries that are like making roads out of, you know, recycled plastic bottles and things like that. So is that part of what this will look at, is are there things we may look at to be more sustainable, or is this really more focused on, on costs?
It was really taking a look at condition, funding strategy, and equity, but certainly with some of our other plans, we want to make sure this plan aligns with every, all the other great work that we're doing as a city, so we can certainly take a look at that as well.
Thank you. Other questions, council? If not, I have a couple. So you mentioned public engagement. I think that's extraordinarily important, because this is one of the few really obvious services that the city provides to every resident. And to your point earlier, that the roads are in good shape. So I don't, I'm not looking for the answer tonight, but I am interested in understanding what the plan will be for public engagement. When you said alligators, Greg, I assumed we'd be doing an alligator hunt, and that that would be a clearly something that we would pursue desperately, as a way to get people involved and engaged and educated.
Thank goodness, we don't have those yet, we just have beaver problems to deal with.
Okay, so in terms of the other proposals, the proposal you had out, did you get a fair number for the back, and are you happy with what you got back? Because I understand there's been quite a great deal of just consolidation.
Yeah, they're all competitive. This firm scored not only the best in their qualifications, but in their pricing. We weighted it so that pricing wasn't the only component, but there are skill sets, the skill set of the company, the skill set of the team, and then the assets or value that they're providing for the price that they had. So it was a weighted scoring system, and they're all, there was, there's five proposals, three were quite close, the other two were relatively close as well. So it was, it was a very good proposal opportunity for us.
That's really good news. I'm glad to hear that. If there are no other questions, then we will release you into the evening. Thank you, Greg and Audrey, and thank you for the presentation.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Okay, now I would like to think that we have finally gotten to council reports, the city manager report. The first piece up is letters supporting PSSB 5160 and Public Safety Program Funding. Is that something you're going to address?
Yes, Mayor, I'll take that one. Senator Dingra was very graciously put funding in a new program that would give us some funding for Eastside Sammamish Parkway, where it is sinking, this is our emergency number-one priority project. So that's great, it requires a new revenue source, that's the downside, and it is in the Senate version and not the House version. So like with all things in the legislature, nothing has been finalized. However, they were looking for letters of support for this new program, and so in the essence of time, we added the mayor's signatures, as this was on legislative priorities. So this is just an FYI for council. Along those same lines, there are a couple of other things that are going on that are already on our legislative priorities that we are weighing in on in favor of. One is the continued funding of our, part of our George Davis Creek funding. And the other piece is, there is a bill that is having a hearing later this week on raising the 1% property tax cap, which we have registered our support for. So again, all these pieces are still in play, I don't know if you saw the Seattle Times today, but the governor has basically said he's not supportive of new revenue, and so I have a feeling this session will not be done when we think it's going to be done, but this will be ongoing. So none of these are done, but when we have the opportunity, this is why we have our lobbyists, and this is why we weigh in, hopefully heavily in favor of. But I do want to say this also speaks to the positive relationships that we're building with our delegation, and the delegation understood the need and was very supportive, and I think that speaks well to council's collective direction for moving forward. The other piece, Mayor, if I may, if I'll finish my council, city manager report, is I do want to remind the community that next week before our meeting at 5:30, we will be having our first, and again, someone correct me if I get this wrong, but I believe this is our first actual State of the City address. We're looking forward to it, we have invited in our community partners and supporters, and we invite the community to come in and join us. We will be here in City Hall, we'll be right here in this very room, and we look forward to having everyone come in and join us to hear about what we've done over the past year and where council is headed in the future. And again, this is an address on behalf of council that the mayor will be providing. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone. With that, Mayor, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, I'll just make one quick note about the letter supporting the Public Safety Program Funding. I mean, I really thank Luke and Nick, our lobbyists, has helped with this, but also the team that went down to Olympia to really lobby hard for it. So even, we don't know how this is really going to turn out, but being there in person, there is nothing, absolutely nothing, that beats that. So we are pushing as hard as we can to try to get funding for important projects within the city. So I want to just thank council member Gupta and council member Stewart for their support and being willing to put in the time and the miles to really push this forward. There is another letter that I'd like to bring up, and in this case, it's kind of an interesting one, it's one that was started by Mayor Mary Lou Polly, and it was picked up immediately by several other mayors as well, as supporting the idea that we want to support the appointment of Deputy Executive Shannon Broddick as acting King County Executive, and not have the appointment automatically go to somebody on the King County Council. So I'd be interested in hearing feedback from council, what are your thoughts? Council member Stewart.
Yeah, I think it's moot, because I think that the King County Council appointed her today, did they not?
They did, so I think it is moot, unless somebody can change it. Can they change it?
No, I think it's done.
Okay, well, good. So we don't have to worry about that. Then we'll go on to other.
Mayor, if I may, I think the deputy city manager just pointed out to me that they named her acting, not interim, and I want to make that distinction, because acting means that they could choose to do something different, interim means it's a little more permanent. So while they did appoint her as acting, I don't, and in all likelihood, she could be acting through the end of the election, but there is that possibility, so.
Okay, when I saw acting, I thought that that kind of raised my question, too. So if we could go on to other council reports, who has a report they'd like to give? I'm so sorry, I have one other letter, that's right, the supporting the Snoqualmie Community Center Expansion Project. So that is a project in Snoqualmie for expanding a pool. Actually, Deputy Mayor Lamb, you probably know more about it than I do, because you were at that meeting, but my understanding is, is that Mayor Catherine Ross is looking for support for people to add on to it. They're hoping that by providing funding for this pool, that'll actually relieve some of the pressure of like our pool, for example, and expand services out to a wider community. So that's what I believe this is, but does, do you have more to add to that?
Yeah, they just have a one small 87-year-old pool, and they're looking to build a $4 million pool, so they're just looking for us to add our names and support.
Right. Council member Stewart.
Oh, sorry, I had a report, so not speaking to that, sorry.
Okay, okay. Is there general agreement that this is okay to sign on to? So I'm looking for head nods.
As a council, or you as an individual?
Well, anything that I do, I try to make sure the council is involved in. So I want to make sure that we're all good with that, if I sign that.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Great. Then council reports. So, council member Stewart.
Yeah, the GNPB meeting is on Thursday, and we will have 13 comp plans to approve. None of them have any major flags, but there'll be just some general comments around, mostly around housing and monitoring. And then, Mr. City Manager, I will share that we used to have a State of the City Report every year, but we haven't had one, I don't think, since City Manager Line and Howard left the city. So it will be the first one that we've had in a very long time, and it's very exciting.
Council member Trane.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the GNPC caucus meeting was last week, then we did the GNPC meeting. It was virtual due to the weather conditions, so that was a lot of fun, and Carnation and Snoqualmie and some Sammamish residents also provided, all three of those cities provided public comment. And then on Friday, the Kokony ILA meeting was had, and they voted in a new chair for the Kokony ILA Committee, and they chose a council member from Sammamish, Kent Trane. Oh, that's me. So I was, I was appointed the chair. And so then I met on the 27th with Allison, who is the King County staff person that supports. So we talked a bit about just what is the chair position, how are the two of us going to work together, and then we spent a lot of time on the budget. And so that'll be coming to the council, and the idea is to do it sooner than later, so we should be coming to the cities and municipalities with that. On the 28th, I then met with Toby, who is the Sammamish staff person who's going to, well, hold on, I better not speak out of turn here. Toby will be supporting me on this. Okay, thanks. So Toby is the staff support for the ILA and the Kokony Salmon Recovery, which that's what we're funding, so. Also, there was on the 27th, a visit to the open house at the fire station number 82. What, saw council member Stewart and council member Lamb there as well. It was a really well-attended event, and good job on staff, and the young lady from the fire, Eastside Fire and Rescue, who put that on, she did a wonderful job throwing a good party.
Others?
I'll just say quickly, though, congratulations.
I'll just say quickly though, congratulations, council member Trane, on your appointment to chairing. And so council member Gupta.
I've got a King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting next week. I think it's Tuesday before our next meeting, so I will try and send meeting materials
If there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make the motion to adjourn before the sun rises here in New York.
And you look amazing, really. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Good night and good evening. Thank you.